Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. We will all stand and the pledge of allegiance will be led by the board and we'll stand for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert, and I'll let you start off with the opening ceremony.
Certainly, thank you. We're delighted tonight to have Vice Mayor Chris Bratcher with us, who will be administering the oath of office to re-elected board members Ray Buttram and Mary Wade and to newly-elected board member Dennis Renier. So, welcome Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. It's an honor for me to be here tonight to administer this oath of office, and if I could at this time, I could ask Ms. Wade, you, Mr. Renier, and Mr. Buttram, if you would join me down here at the podium so we can begin the ceremonies, and while they're coming down, I would like to thank the school board, the entire school board, and also the superintendent, and Ms. Gilbert, and the staff, and all our educators, and also Mr. Washington for your service from the council on this board, for what you do. Although I speak for Mayor Bragg and the entire city council, I want to say thank you for your hard work, for what you do for our kids and for our parents of the city. If you would, kind of line up right here, if you would please, and I want to thank you for the good working relationship that this board has with the council, and I know you're all good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and I want to say, take that opportunity, just thank you for that. I'll scoot back a little bit. Stand right over here so I can get you on the camera. I think we can get on with that. At this time, I want to congratulate you for your reelection and Mr. Renier for your service and the new member of the board. So, at this time, I'd ask you to raise your right hand and just repeat after me, if you will. I do solemnly affirm
I do solemnly affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the State of Tennessee
That I will support the Constitution of the State of Tennessee
and of the United States
and of the United States
and the acts constituting the charter of the City of Murfreesboro
and the acts constituting the charter of the City of Murfreesboro
and that I will faithfully
and that I will faithfully
zealously
zealously
and impartially
and impartially
discharge the duties of a member of the Board of Education
discharge the duties of a member of the Board of Education
of the City of Murfreesboro
of the City of Murfreesboro
without fear or favor
without fear or favor
and for the public welfare
and for the public welfare.
Congratulations.
Very excited. Thank you.
And a big welcome to our new member too, Mr. Renier. Our old, not old colleague. Our colleague said.
She called us old. If I could now get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Some move.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Dr. Gilbert, communications?
We'd like to congratulate and wish our best for the retiring employees that were honored recently at John Pittard on May the 20th. We certainly appreciate their service to Murfreesboro City and they will be missed. Mitchell Nelson Primary would like to thank the following for participating in the Amazing Alumni Program in April, PJ McGowan, Beth Swain, and Sheriff Truman Jones. They were all alumni of Mitchell Nelson. Mitchell Nelson Elementary and Bradley Academy thank the following volunteers for their work in beautifying the school's campuses, Cliff Sharp with Greenhouse Ministries, of course, Diane and Collette Delk, Design Gate Nursery, and Reverend Ron Kerdoff, who is with the Christian Life Church. These folks came to us and said that they would like to donate time on a day out, on a Sunday day out, and certainly, I got very excited because I know that Ms. Payne texted me after church and she said that there were about 300 people on their campus and they were working with landscaping, so we certainly appreciate their work. Principals Linda Clark and Roseanne Barton have been chosen to become members of the Hanbon Bridge delegation and will be traveling to China in June to observe and to work with schools there. And then the following schools have been awarded a Fresh Fruit and Vegetables Healthy Snacks Grant for the next school year. Bellwood Bowden Preschool, $17,650, Bradley Academy, $17,250, and Hobgood, $16,500. And if I could, I'd like to thank Cheryl Hare. Last night, we had a very successful celebration where we honored teachers and other employees that had really gone beyond and had written grants and presented national presentations and international presentations and really have made our school system what it is, and so I want to thank her and to thank those folks who were honored last night at the hats off celebration.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Is there a motion to approve our consent items or is there something on there that you want to take off?
I move we approve the consent items.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye. Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, action item.
Your action item tonight deals with board policies and I'm going to turn this over to Kelly Baker.
Okay. Last Tuesday, we had our first special meeting for our policy work session, and I presented a number of policies, and these two are ready to be approved on first reading unless you have any changes to them. The first policy is relative to policy development, and it is designed to set the framework for our policy review sessions and how the board will approach reviewing the policies. The two points to note in this is that unless there is some emergency, some situation where we have to get a policy adopted immediately due to a requirement in the law or an issue that's come up, the majority of policies, we would do two readings. And those two readings, it's at the discretion of the board to determine when they occur. They can occur at a policy work session during a special meeting or they can occur at a regular board meeting. It's up to the board when to do those two readings. I think typically, we had discussed trying to do the two readings at regular board meetings unless there was some need to hurry the adoption of the policy. So, that's the one important factor in it. The other is, of course, like with any good rules, there is an exception. The exception to the two-reading rule is if there are just minor editorial changes that need to be made to a policy, especially those situations where you may adopt one policy, change a wording, change a definition that's going to do the domino effect and need to be revised in additional policies, that you could just make that change in one vote and do that on the consent agenda, so it's not eating up a lot of the board's time. So, that's the main issues in this policy. I'll let the board discuss it and make any motions to accept it on first reading.
Are there any questions from any of the board members concerning policy development, BO 42? Here and none, is there a motion to accept it's first reading?
So moved.
Second. There's been a motion, a motion and a second, that we will accept this on the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
The second policy deals with its policy STU 3, and it deals with school admissions. And I brought this to the board at the policy review work session, special meeting. Due to one factor was the change in tuition that had come about at a prior board meeting, so there was a need to make a revision in this policy relative to that, and that is reflected in the section that deals with out-of-county students. You'll see there in bold, there's the sentence that was added, was "Out-of-county students residing with a parent or legal guardian who is a full-time employee of the Murfreesboro City School System shall not be required to pay the out-of-county tuition." And that was added based on a vote that was taken at a prior meeting. And then another change that is needed due to a change in the state statutes, they no longer require that we obtain a student's social security number, so that section has been deleted out of this policy. And then the last section that deals with parent or legal guardian notice to school of child's criminal offenses, that is added in order to assist staff when they are dealing with school admissions if this issue comes out. In my seven years working with the school board, it's only come up once. So, it is a state statute that requires the parent or legal guardian of a child to notify the school system of the criminal offenses that the child has been found delinquent of if they are certain types of serious offenses before they're enrolled. So, I'm adding that to the policy just to be there to assist staff to know that they need to be aware of that issue.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Is there any discussion or question? Just Douggy.
First of all, I'd just like to compliment Mrs. Baker for her work with us in our policy development sessions, and I greatly appreciate at the end of our policies that you're listing all the Tennessee Code annotated and other references that will help us as we continue to work on our policies in the years to come. I think that's a great addition to our policies. I did have, in light of our conversation in our first session, we were discussing some discrepancies with how this policy's been followed, so I was wondering, and I know that Dr. Gilbert will write a new administrative directive to help with some issues, but would it be appropriate that in that second paragraph or the first paragraph, under "Students Out of City Within Rutherford County," just for clarification purposes, if we were to add something that emphasized the fact that this was to reflect every school within our district? I mean, it says that, and yet it maybe leaves a little more interpretation than I would like to see it have. Maybe after that sentence where it says contingent upon availability or available space, maybe a comment about this is to be applied equally or the same at every one of our schools or each of our city schools.
Okay.
Ms. Phillips, and then Dr. Andrews.
I believe it was Dr. Andrews at the policy study meeting who brought up this point, which I thought was a good point, about grandfathering through students who may already be, for example, at the discovery school, so that they're not suddenly kicked out. Did I understand you correctly about that, Dr. Andrews? And I believe that adding something about grandfathering those students through would be appropriate.
You can, Ms. Phillips. Dr. Andrews, and then Ms. Douggy.
I feel that this statement is probably, is sufficient. I don't want to tie our hands or future boards' hands if we want to make, our schools are not all the same. We have schools that are more choice schools, and of course, you're talking about in terms of if there's room, and I think that that's, that probably our choice schools do have more room and we have smaller zones for those schools. I think that this will cover what we needed to do. I think that this makes sure that our children in the city get, they're going to be taken care of, and then if we have space after that, that's, that other children can be in. We might need to make it clear that once we have admitted someone from out of city or out of county, that they are, that they will be able to continue to stay in our system. I think that's been our policy in spite of having, you know, things may get tight at a certain school, but I think that's only fair if you're going to encourage people to come into your schools, and I think they need to know that if they come in, they get to stay. So, I don't know if that needs to be part of an administrative directive or if that needs to be part of the policy, but I think it speaks, you know, I think that we do have our children pretty well covered.
Ms. Douggy.
That would be a question I would have, would it be appropriate, because I'm in agreement that if a child's already in one of our schools, that they should be able to stay as long as they meet any criteria that might be there, you know? If they're in kindergarten this year, then they ought to be able to stay all the way through sixth grade if they choose to. So, grandfathering is very important, I believe. However, would it be better for that to be part of the administrative directive if Dr. Gilbert decides to do that, or should it be part of the policy?
It could really lie in either place. I think that is in some of the administrative directives right now, that once they're admitted, they continue to stay, and, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, there are forms that they sign that deal with the fact that they have to maintain good attendance and meet all of the discipline standards. Those are the two reasons I know that a child would not be allowed to return, is if they've had truancy issues or discipline issues. And there is some document that I've dealt with, in truancy court, relative to that factor, so that would be the only reason that a child wouldn't be allowed to continue throughout their elementary years in our system once they are admitted. And that's out-of-county or out-of-city students.
Because I do want to make sure that those children that are currently in the school, that grandfathering clause is someplace.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion for policy on school admission?
I move we approve this policy.
Are you approving with the changes that are effective here or?
With the, this policy as written. I'd like to approve it, to move that we approve it.
Is there a second to approve school admissions STU 3 as is?
Is that a good question?
Question.
Is that including the grandfathering clause or?
I'm assuming that that would be able to be handled through an administrative directive. If you all feel that we need to add this in here, then I would accept that.
Mr. Renier.
I feel strongly that I think this needs to be part of the policy. I don't know that it's, I guess you could do it either way, but I really feel like if that's going to be our groundwork and that's how we're going to lead the city schools, then I think it probably needs to be part of the policy.
So, how about if we added, let's see, students out of city within Rutherford County and then also the out-of-county students, a phrase that says that once a child has been admitted to the city school system, that they will continue to have a space in our school system unless they fail to meet the requirements laid out in administrative directives.
Okay, that's fine. I'll draft some language in, have that in it when it comes to you in second reading.
Okay.
For, that includes that language.
Mr. Campbell.
It may never happen, but I'm getting ready to, all right? But let's say an example, well, for how long, I know they're going, we're going to allow them to stay all the way through sixth grade. Now, if a student enters in kindergarten, then that child leaves for two years. Is that child still guaranteed a spot if they come back?
That's a deal. If you write it in that I'm grandfathering them in, period, then that language could be interpreted as that they get to come back.
I don't think it would be. I don't think it would be.
Let Mr. Campbell.
That's just a question, and I don't know, I feel like it needs to be thought about anyway. It could happen, it may not, but it could.
Maybe that could be addressed in administrative directives.
Okay. Ms. Phillips.
I think that's a good point, because it could happen. It's possible, perhaps so, that could, we won't know all the circumstances surrounding that, and that could be something that's in Dr. Gilbert's province, she, you know, that aspect.
So, I move we pass it with that language change that Ms. Baker would bring back to us. Can we do that on the first reading?
Yes. Okay, there's still a question on the floor.
And my question's for Ms. Baker, since we are not used to doing things on first, second readings, what's the normal procedure for having changes and all and doing?
I take your feedback after, from your discussion in the first reading. Can anything you vote for me to add to the policy, I'll add it, I'll add language and bring it back to you in second reading, and then you'll vote to approve it.
Okay.
As revised.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments before? There is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just have a question, does it fit with your, do you feel like your concerns will be addressed between this and administrative directives?
I feel sure it'll be addressed in the administrative directive.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor of the changes that we've made to come back in our second reading for approval? All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board. Dr. Gilbert, report.
Under reports and information, at this time, I'd like to ask Michelle Hummel to come forward. You will probably be seeing a lot more of Michelle because, as you might imagine, we are about to plunge pretty headlong into instruction and getting ready for next year. So, I'd like for her to come and present to you just a brief summary of where we are with Race to the Top, because she has been the lady who's been working on this quite a bit with me.
Good evening. I'm pleased and excited to share a little bit of information with you about the Race to the Top application. The State of Tennessee is lucky in the fact that we were one of two states nationwide to be selected to receive Race to the Top grants. Murfreesboro City Schools in particular will actually be receiving a little over $1.2 million over the next four years. We are required by the state to allocate 25% of that in the first year, so we're looking at a little bit over $320,000 for the first year. Some of the elements of the state reform plan, you have a blue sheet, I believe, on your tables, some of the elements that the state put into their application and that we're required by the signing of the memorandum of understanding that you all heard about a few months ago, are as follows. Standards and assessments, and that's really something that the state has already begun working on, in the fact that we have new state standards for reading, language arts, math, and science, so we're well underway with standards and assessments. The second is data systems to support instruction. The third is great teachers and leaders. And the fourth is turning around lowest achieving schools in the state. Murfreesboro City Schools and all of their systems throughout the state were asked to submit our, what we call the scope of work, our version of our grant application to the state last Friday. They are working to review those and give us feedback in the next few weeks, hopefully by the mid to end of June. If it is approved, we'll find out at that time, and we should begin seeing a first allocation of funds at the beginning of July. Part of what we were required to do with our application was to align specifically with the state application, those few things that I've mentioned, and also to align our goals with the goals of the TCSPP, which is our district improvement plan. We did that well, and we're excited and hopeful that we will see approval in the next few weeks and see those funds come to us.
Thank you, Michelle.
Is it true that, I know we're receiving, that we will spend approximately $325,000 in the first year?
Yes, ma'am.
I know there are very strict guidelines about how that money can be used. There's not as much flexibility with that money as there is with other monies. Have we also lost considerable dollars in other federal funding?
We lost about $150,000 total this year in our federal programs through Title I and the elimination of the Title IV program statewide. So, yes, we did see a great reduction. We're excited about having these funds with Race to the Top, because there are a lot of things that we're excited to do, things to build our leadership in the district, enhance teacher performance and effectiveness, and I think that we'll be able to meet the goals of the state quite effectively with what we've got planned.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Ms. Phillips?
Will we be giving kind of an update or an overview at some point when you have more information?
What has happened to us is they are giving us feedback all the time on it, so I will give you what, hopefully, we'll hear something this week, but I will certainly give you what we have submitted. If you look at what has happened with the federal dollars, at some point, I hope we get to have more money for programming because we really need that, but what we're seeing come from down the pipe from the feds really is, the reason that I gave you the documents you have is because I wanted you to understand that really the movement is toward more professional development, toward more accountability, toward more evaluation, more than really the programming, which is fine, but at some point, that implementation has to take place. And so, what you will see us doing in Murfreesboro City is looking for other grant funding for after-school programming, for example, because we really are needing that, we're looking at, we'll be looking very hard at sort of revamping and making ESP all that it can be, and to do that, we're going to need funding, and I do not want to come to this board for that. So, we will be looking at other creative ways with MTSU to do that, because what we know is that out-of-school time can greatly impact student learning, and especially for those students who need that time and need the additional reinforcement than what we would see during the school day. But what you will find in our application, you will find money for leadership, money for teacher mentoring, which we have needed desperately. You will find, one of the things that came out with the TCSET plan, and we've also heard from our principals, is training for midday assistance and educational assistance, that will be a big part of it. We'll also be taking a look at a creative way to help eliminate the gap with math and also provide our teachers with a real foundation of reading so that we can understand why we need to employ, what strategies we need to employ. So, when you look at our application, those things will align, because what became very clear, especially after we made the first submission and had a couple of folks look at it at the state, there were a couple of consultants that they had assigned to this region, some of the things that we wanted to do, for example, we had written in laptop carts, and we really were questioned about that, so they are following the guidelines of the state application pretty rigidly.
When will dollars actually reach our coffers?
We expect those to arrive shortly after the 1st of July, our first installment.
Okay.
They, oh, yeah. Dr. Andrews?
Well, I, you know, I see this as a really big opportunity, and I know you've given us information about what you're asking for. How long would it take you to just give us a few little bullet points on where you exactly see this money going?
Okay, I can do that tonight if you'd like, or I can share it with you later. We won't have, I won't be able to guarantee you that this is where it's going until we hear from them. What I've asked for is, we have obviously looked at literacy, I've asked for a person who would be working strictly with literacy, I want that person to work with developing and implementing a way that we can look at professional development, targeted professional development for teachers who are below effective in reading. I have asked for working with, training respective administrators, what we would be doing with that is having a leadership academy, and as a matter of fact, we have already put out, I expect that one to not have a problem with the state, but we have actually asked for applications. But we have actually asked for applications. We have 25 people who are interested in coming to that leadership academy this summer, and we would do a follow-up on that in the fall and spring. In fact, may even implement some more leadership academies. This first one is directed toward teachers, but we have had indication from educational assistants, from central office staff, that they very much would like to learn more about leadership, so I can see where we would expand this. We have looked at a program called Letters, which really is a very foundational program for having teachers understand the five elements of reading, and we are looking at working with all of our teachers so that they have a foundational knowledge. As you know, we've been meeting with the RTI committee now since January. One of the things that's become very apparent there is that we need to do some more work with our teachers with just the foundational content knowledge of reading. What does reading consist of, what does that look like, and the five different elements of that? So we really see a need for that. We're looking at at least two days of training for educational assistants and also two days of training of midday assistants. We're using more and more our educational assistants and midday assistants to help with instruction, particularly with small group individual students. And what has come through loud and clear from our principals and also from our teachers is, and from the assistants themselves, is they need help with strategies. That too frequently it's easy to have them in small groups, but then the question is now what, just as surely as our teachers ask the same thing. We're looking at a teacher mentoring program for first and third grade teachers, and also for designing an intensive assistance program, which has to do with those teachers who are tenured, who may be having difficulty and may need help with particular areas of being more effective. So we're looking at that. We're looking at a program, it's a hands-on program called a HAMR program. The children actually works with, teaching them scale and also teaching them fractions in particular and ratios, but actually those children build a small house, and it has been proven to be very effective. And so we're looking at that program. We're also looking at our new teachers, our first or third-years teachers. We're wanting them in the classrooms more to do observation of effective teachers. So there's funding in there to pay substitutes for doing two days of observation. We had, this year with our new teacher cohort, we had them go into classrooms for two days, and they found that extremely effective. It was amazing to pull those new teachers together with those experienced teachers, there were four, that were observed and to hear their conversation and to hear the learning that went on. So we really believe that some of the most effective staff development that we can do is with observing the really good teachers and having those teachers dialogue together about why they do certain things. We also are looking at a person who would be, and we had discussed this before, but really, we expect there to be, and after talking with the state, I'm sure there will be, more evaluation, we're looking at evaluating teachers annually and also principals annually. And so with the weight of that on the principal's shoulders, we really are wanting some help with that evaluation. This person though also would be responsible, particularly with our experienced teachers, with our tenured teachers, with going into classrooms and observing those teachers and dialoguing with them about how they could be more effective. So that's really, that's where we're looking at funding, primarily teacher professional development, also working with the math and reading and the leadership training, and the EA and MDA training.
Yeah, it sounds like that's going to be very practical and, you know, really useful, teaching the teacher effectiveness and not just the content matter, but helping them learn how to manage classrooms better and that kind of thing. And there is more literature out there about how to do that, I think, than there used to be. It was sort of a, you know, there were good teachers and bad teachers, and I used to think if you were a bad teacher, you couldn't be a good one. And now I think they're seeing that there are specific ways to teach techniques to teachers that do have difficulty. So it sounds very useful. And to me, spending a little time hearing about that is really important, because it's all about what we do. It's not about how people, how kids get to school, or roofs, or whatever.
You will see us, we are beginning to shift focus. We've obviously been working with our principals very hard on a weekly basis, had an excellent session with them today. We'll have two more sessions with them before summer. We've begun to look at our new teachers and what we can do as far as new teacher orientation. We're beginning to look again with the developing leaders from within, so you will see a definite shift. We feel like that we now have, over the last four months, we really have some support systems that are in place, that are coming on board, that now we can really begin to focus on instruction. And as we talk with the principals today, our goal has been to give them that everybody is on the same page as far as knowing what everybody else knows with some foundational kinds of things. And so now to take that next step and to really get into the classroom and see what we need to be doing with teaching and learning, because that's the most critical thing we can do, obviously.
I have a question, and then a comment, and then a couple of questions. Thank you for sharing that. It's like, my goodness, it's so big, it's just such a big vision. I just know it's going to do so much good. On things like the leadership academies and the leadership and the training of the EAs and the MDAs for the small group work, will there be some sort of evaluation instrument to find out if having these leadership academies are effective? Do they actually affect student learning?
I think that we can do some follow-up on that. What I have said about this leadership academy, I know in another school system with which I worked last year, they actually decided that any of their future administrators had to come out of that academy. I don't want to go there. I think that what we need to be about right now is those people who want to learn more about leadership, giving them that opportunity. I think that one of the things we can expect though is that out of that cohort group will come, certainly we can do surveys. I think if we were to look at the effectiveness of them in the classroom, I think we would be looking at some things there in the classroom with those teachers that we could see immediately with test scores. Also, how much more responsibility are they taking? Are they participating more in committee work? If they become administrators, how effective are they in administration? So I think some of those things will be pretty subjective and maybe qualitative. Some of the things I think at some point can be quantitative. But absolutely with that, certainly with the MDAs and with the EAs, the effectiveness of them will be coming through, what their teachers are telling us and what the principals are telling us. Also self-evaluation, but there again, you would expect, if we want to look at quantitative, the ultimate quantitative is going to be on those test scores, and being able to look at those students where we had had the EAs and seeing if their test scores and what we're hearing from them about, about what we're hearing from the teachers and the EAs about how much more effective they are. But I think you're right.
I think that would be great, and that would, you know, some kind of follow-up to let us know what we're doing, what's effective, what's not. My next question is, persons that might be hired with this grant funding, the grant money, my understanding is runs out in four years.
That's right.
I remember Dr. Newell always bringing to the table, what are we going to do when the money's not there for these positions? Are they being hired and knowing that the money is?
And there was a stipulation, which we said that at the end of the four years, within the current budget that we have, that somehow we would find a way to provide. Now that may mean that we would be looking at other positions that might be district-wide positions and evaluating to see where is the effectiveness of the money best used. So I feel confident that within the current budget, if we had to shift monies, that we could shift monies, if we find that these positions are as beneficial as I think that they will be. I want to be really clear that with these positions, I do not see these as supervisory kind of positions. I see these positions as directly designing programs and working with the classroom teachers and working with the administrators to make sure that the programs, I don't see them as a new add-on, but I see them strictly as resource people and effective people who do have the research base and who do have the experience. Otherwise, I won't be hiring them.
Do you have a ballpark figure of how many employees we're thinking of adding?
We would be adding, these two would be the two that have Race to the Top. We still have, of course, we have the current Director of Curriculum, and we would be looking at, we at one point had four in instruction, I'm looking at one point and four in instruction now, really laterally, because each one will have very distinct responsibilities, and I'll be talking about that later on with you.
So our budget in four years will have to be able to absorb those two employees?
Those two employees, right.
Dr. Andrews is here, Mr. Dunn.
I appreciate what Mrs. Phillips said about the research and, you know, looking to see if things work. And I hoped for, for years, that we could work with MTSU and see if any of their graduate students or anyone working on a thesis could help us with evaluating the effectiveness. You know, years ago, I thought, you know, let's see how the kids in ESP do, or, you know, that was a thought for a study. You know, we implement new programs all the time, and we often don't follow up to see if they really work. And I think you're great at interacting with other organizations, especially with MTSU. And if you see any opportunities like that, I would really.
We could do that, that won't be a problem.
Yeah, I just think that that's, that would really help us know what's working, what isn't, you know, how to fix it, what to continue spending money on, where we need to pull the plug.
Right. And I think you'll find that I'm not really big on programs. I'm bigger on, I'm not for adding programs. I am at looking at how can we work together to have what we already have and to make it better. And I really think that when you look at professional learning communities, that whole premise is that we have knowledge within our schools and knowledge within our district that we need to be sharing. And I think that that's critical to do. I think that when you look at what we're going to be doing with Internet and when you look at what we're going to be doing with professional learning communities, again, the whole premise is let's use the knowledge that we have. Then if we need to go outside, then let's do that. But it's that facilitation of knowledge that we have within our district that I think is really critical. And I think that if you talk to teachers, what they will tell you, and if you talk to principals, we really have taken that approach. With the principals meeting, it's about sharing together with the RTI committee. It is about talking about what does it look like? What does reading look like in your school? What does it look like in this school? And what does an intervention look like here? And what does it look like here? And what are the differences? And it's pretty amazing, I just have tremendous faith in teachers who are educated professionals, who I find love learning if we give them a chance to learn. And I think it's our role, when we have access to that knowledge that is within that classroom and within that school building across the district, then if there's a gap, then let's go out and find that. But I think if we can have really quality folks at the central office and really quality leaders in the school, that that will make a huge difference. And I think that's really, I think that's what we're working toward. And I think the teachers and the principals are really enjoying the learning that's going on. I could be wrong, but that's not what I'm hearing from them. So I'm very pleased with the direction we're going, and I think that we'll see results.
Are there any more questions or comments?
Just a follow-up to what Dr. Andrews said about doing the evaluation on current programs. That's actually part of our district-wide SACS evaluation. It was a recommendation in that, so we definitely need to do that.
That's right.
And I know you're very much committed to doing follow-up to determine what is effective and what isn't. Under D on this page, where it talks about, you know, designing and implementing evaluation system, I know that we're waiting to hear from the State Department about what that committee actually comes up with as far as how the evaluation looks. As a past classroom teacher, depending on what form that evaluation takes, if it's going to be, I hope we'll get some feedback from our teachers on this, if it's going to be walkthroughs, which will be a little bit less formal than, you know, when someone comes in and sits for 45 minutes and does a more formal evaluation. I know the others will still be formal in some sense. I would have much greater, a much greater sense that the evaluation was going to be truly in great depth and very fair and being able to give feedback constructive and, you know, big picture. If it's going to be a walkthrough, if it's someone that's in my building all the time. So I hope that we'll look very carefully at the format that we are given from the State Department as far as evaluation, and look at that carefully to determine then how much we want to involve people who are not part of the school full-time.
Right.
Although I do understand principals needing some additional help with some of this, since every teacher will have to be evaluated every year. But I do hope that we'll take a close look at that.
Right. And I think that one of the things that we are trying to do, and you will hear me say to principals, is that some of the things, the principal's leader in that school, and the bottom line is that principal. And one of the things that I have discussed with principals already is that is their responsibility, one of the greatest responsibilities they have really is that teacher evaluation, and it has to happen. And although I know that they use their assistant principals, their name goes on that bottom line. So I think you're absolutely right. I think you're right.
Ms. Phillips?
I have one more question, and just looking at this, because I just saw it tonight, so I hadn't had a chance to review it. But in Section 3, when it talks about ensuring equitable distribution of effective teachers and principals in high-poverty or minority schools on hard-to-staff subjects and specialty areas, does that mean that we can pay more to highly effective teachers to go into schools with high poverty?
That is being done in some areas. I think what you'll find the research saying, and I think what this is targeting, is we have to be very careful that we have excellent teachers in all schools and particularly in, and in all areas. So in particularly hard-to-staff content areas and in schools that may have, for various reasons, have students that are more at risk, low socioeconomic schools. The ability, I think you're going to see more and more schools, and we already seen that across the United States, shifting some of their best teachers to those schools. Now, the way that we're approaching this is we are working to empower all of our teachers. So at this point in time, I don't see doing shifts, massive shifts of teachers. Now, if we were to reach the point at which we had to take some pretty drastic measures down the pike in several years, then we might be forced into some of that if we had a state takeover, for example, which we don't foresee that at all. But there are some school districts that, as I'm sure you've read in different areas of the country and also in different areas of the state, that are shifting some of their best, most effective teachers, the teachers with the highest test scores, into low-income schools. And also paying stipends to teachers to try to get them to shift to low-income schools. I don't think that we're at that stage yet. I think that what we're seeing in Murfreesboro City is we're seeing more and more people, I think you will see more people want to come here that are high-quality people to do teaching and also for administrative positions. But that certainly is one of the emphases that we've seen across the United States, and I think that the Race to the Top, absolutely the state is moving toward that. I think not only are we seeing it with this, we're seeing some of the other big initiatives, for example, SCORE, and some of the other initiatives that we've seen in some of the papers, white papers that have talked about that. So I think that's a reflection of that.
Follow-up question about the funding, Dr. Gilbert. Can the money be used to reward schools in high-poverty districts who have a significant jump in scores?
I don't know.
I understand that they were doing that effectively in Chattanooga and very sundry places, and they had a very effective response to that. But they had to get, I mean, they rewarded everybody in the building.
Right, and that's the reason I said I don't know. I think that when we get into that, really you're looking at contracts and you're looking at some areas that have not yet been proven. And I think that some schools are going to be, are going to be more amenable to that than others in some school districts. Of course, that's the board's decision, but I think there would have to be a lot of study done toward that before we probably would want to move toward that.
Thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
I know in the current contract with our teachers, and I don't think that language was taken out this year, there is a signing bonus that can be paid if it's in an area like ELL or special ed or whatever, if we have a hard time finding a teacher to help recruit a teacher. Have we used a signing bonus at all? Okay, and that's been in, what, the contract now, two years? Okay.
We've, we've been fortunate, and what we're, what we're not seeing this year is, is we're also not seeing a lot of retirements. So we're not looking at hiring. And Mr. Wilkerson, you may want to address that. In fact, I wish you would. If you would address a little bit of what we are seeing in this, this system, I think the board needs to know. And since personnel update is up, maybe she can just stand up there. But if you could talk with them a little bit about what we're seeing as far as retirements and, and how many folks we think we may have to hire, I think it would be an appropriate time.
We have had a minimal number of retirements. I think seven were the total. That's the number in my mind. That'll be in next month's personnel update, the number of retirements and, as well as resignations and leaves of absence. Right now, we're looking at about four to five classroom teaching positions that are open, but with the anticipation that the enrollment's going to be what we hope it will be. And I know there's been some concern with the opening of the, of the two new schools in the county, that, that we may have a reduction in enrollment. We hope that's not the case, but we're being very conservative on the, the hiring of new teachers in anticipation of that. Of course, you don't want to lose the good ones. And so what we've asked our principals to do, of course, is, as they go and we post these positions, that they screen these applicants very carefully. So we do not have a large number of openings at this point.
Dr. Andrews, then, Dr. Gilbert.
I, I just wanted to make a comment. You know, talking about the evaluations and, you know, differential pay and moving teachers to other schools and all, what we're doing right now at Hobgood has been working extremely well. We've got good, strong leadership there. We have excellent teachers and, and they want, just recently won a national award, and we've had a big celebration, and I wish I could have been there because I'm just so proud of them. So I can see your point that, that we don't necessarily need to do some of these things right now. And if we can take what's happened at Hobgood and, and clone it and bring, put it in some of the other schools, like you said, we have the knowledge in the system, then, you know, that, that's what we need to do. I mean, we just have a very successful school there. We still have challenges, and it's a challenging, you know, we have challenges to live up to to help every student get where they need to be, and that's not going to change there or, you know, at, at any other school. But I, I can see your point, we, we don't really need to do that right now. We just, I guess I wish we could clone Hobgood, clone the teachers. And we've got good teachers throughout the system, that, but that's just a, a really sort of shining star right now, I would say.
I, I really believe, and I've shared this with you, I believe that our goal is to be the best that we possibly can be. We, we, our goal is to be an exemplary system that lives with the whole child. And I, I just kind of have lived my life, and I believe the school system has too, that if you're good enough, if you're good enough, if you're doing what you need to be doing, the best that you can possibly do, and if you, if you're the best at what you're doing, then a lot of that takes care of itself as far as the competition. And I have every faith. I think that our recent principal search is an example of that. I think the number that we had, I think, what did we have? Well, Mr. Wilkerson, you have sat down. But Gary, what did we have? Twelve?
We interviewed 12 candidates. We had quite a strong interest in it, both in, inside the district and outside the district.
So I, it's, it's my goal that we see more of that. I, I think that I want people to really clamor to come here because of the excellence that is in the school district. And so I, I have not spent a lot of time thinking about, frankly, what happens if we need to have differential pay or, or if we need to shift a lot of people. But I, I truly believe if we develop the leadership we need to develop and, and are teaching the way we need to be teaching, then a lot of that will take care of itself.
I had a question, probably for Mr. Wilkerson or Dr. Gilbert, concerning the hiring of the, or the five or six classroom teachers. And I, I would assume this could also include any teacher that's going to be hired under the tenure law. Is it possible for us to hire maybe our last 10 positions this year on a contingency that our numbers in the system will meet with our sixth grade, sixth grade classes? I just don't want us to be left with five or six teachers extra that we don't have a space for, especially with our budget like it is now. We can't afford to do that if we do lose those students. And I'm not saying we're going to, but I think there's a strong possibility that, that we could lose more than what we're predicting. And I would just want us to be ready for that and not-
Right.
-be over our budget.
Right. In fact, Mr. Wilkerson, he, he really was not allowed to post anything until, I guess, last week because I was concerned about having to.
But is it legal for us to hire? I mean, once we do post and hire, can they be hired on a contingency that as of August the 30th, the numbers will be where we can keep the employment? Because if, say we lose, we have to lose six, sixth grade classes that we need to move six tenured teachers, then to where do we move those teachers? And do we go back to the last hired and say, we're sorry now, you don't have a job? Can we do that?
I'm not aware of any contingency contracts that have been done in the past. I would have to do some research to see what the contingency basis would be. My initial thought would be that we would, if we were in a situation where we had hired too many teachers, we would have to go to TCA and follow the, the law on a reduction in force. And the reduction in force would be, it's very well spelled out and Tennessee Code annotated how that would work. A teacher that was reduced would be placed on a preferential list for rehire, that if another position came up that they were qualified for, they would be considered for that position. It would still follow through to the director of schools to make that decision. But, you know, a reduction in force is something we would hopefully not have to look at. But, and we, we've been very mindful of that. There are some positions that we anticipate right now with the numbers that they'll be open, but I've had discussions with at least two principals just today, that they say, I would rather not hire that position until we know what the numbers are going to be. And so our thoughts have been, let's be conservative in terms of hiring, especially those schools that we feel may be impacted by the, the growth.
Okay, so let me make, make sure I'm clear on this. In TCA, does it say that we could take a sixth-grade tenured teacher, put them on leave, keep the third-grade non-tenured new hire? Or would we, would we move the sixth-grade teacher down and move the, the new hire?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. It, it gives you some leeway in TCA to do that, but certainly, when you do a reduction in force, I mean, it's, it's very well spelled out.
Well, well, if we have that plan in place already, then I don't think we need to do the contingency. But I, I wanted to make sure we had a backup plan in case we were going to have to scale down. But I would also like for those people that are hired to know that this is a possibility. I mean, I don't want to scare them, but you don't want to walk in their classroom a week into school and surprise them either.
I agree. It's a very difficult situation to be in.
Ms. Phillips.
I just wanted to clarify about the elements of the state reform plan, that I wasn't advocating differential pay, but I do think it's important and a responsibility of the board to have a very clear understanding of the different ramifications and what we can and can't do regarding that, that sum of money. So just wanted to clarify.
And, and you're right, these, these are new waters.
If there's no more questions, you have it.
I'm sorry. I'm talking a lot. One more question.
Sure.
Will we be able to change whether our second year, like if we decided?
Yes. Yes, we can, we can.
If we decided we wanted to do differential pay or something like that.
No, that's right. No, they, they were very clear on that. And, and in fact, what we had to submit is we had, and, and we're not tied down, but the first year, they wanted to see a more complete. We went ahead and submitted all four pretty complete, but we can change that. And that was one of the things. I, I talked with a couple of folks at the state last week, as a matter of fact, and they said they were very aware that we would be shifting. Part of that will come to, depending upon what the state does, because remember, the state has not had their plan that long. So I've forgotten the term that they're using. It's like you're flying the airplane, you're creating the airplane by flying it. Yeah. We're, we're hearing that a lot from the state, and I understand that. But they're, they're having to work on their plan too, but for sure, our plan has to align with the elements. So they fully expect us to, to be able to adjust and modify, as they say.
Mr. Wilkerson, you want to finish?
The, of course, the information under personnel update is a tab three. We have two people that have completed their 90 days, a custodian, John Pittard, and an EA at Hobgood. And the much-awaited tentative assignment lists are behind tab three. Of course, these have to be posted, and were posted in all schools by May 15th. And that's the very limited personnel update. You'll get a full personnel update in, in June with all the end-of-year changes.
Thank you, sir.
Tentative assignments, you said had to be posted by May 15th. Does that include clerical as well as professional?
It only includes licensed personnel, according to TCA, the requirement.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gilbert?
Under tab four, you have your board meeting dates, the tentative dates for the coming I would ask you to consider, and this may be something that you may or may not want to discuss tonight, but with our looking at policies, we, as you know, have several policies that we need to have in place for the beginning of the school year. I realize that the board traditionally has not met in July. I would like for you to, to consider that. It's not a have-to, but it would be helpful to us. But that may not be possible with the schedules.
Ms. Dunn.
I move that we do have a work session or special meeting in July.
Second that.
There's a motion and a second. Questions? Mr. Orne?
I already know that I'm going to be out of town. My dad is almost 89 and has some health issues, so I know that I'm going to be out for both of the work session and the, and the board meeting. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I'll still do whatever I need to do as far as homework's concerned, but I already know those dates are out for me. For July.
Would it be possible to have some dates and have one particular date as options for that month?
Maybe we could send out a, you could send something out like you've done before to see if maybe we could meet like the first or second week in July and see if that would suit people. We didn't have it before because Dr. Newell was always gone that month and some other people. I was always gone a certain week, and I'm not going to be this year, so sort of. And it was a slower time of the year, but there, it was never written in stone that we don't have a meeting that month.
You know, I just think that with people vacationing possibly, it would work better. We might get more people here at the meeting.
Are there any other questions?
There's a motion and a second that we do meet in July, and Mrs. Rittley and Dr. Gilbert would look at some dates and try to set them around the first, second week, if that's possible for us to meet during that time. And Dr. Gilbert, it looks like you may want to look at that pretty soon.
Just for a work session, not for a board meeting, just for a work session.
Do you want to take a vote, since there was a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to get that.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor? Sign of that.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pink.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
On tab five, here's the budget totals. Our, we're back to building our fund balance at this time of year, as you know, where we're trying to get it back up so it carries us through the fall time. Last year at this time, we had $3,355,356, so we're 311,000 to the good right now, this year over last year, which is really good news for us. If you go to the first page of the, well, the revenue page, I'm sorry, we're at 83.3% of the year, so you're looking for the bottom total to be 83.3. If it's above that at the bottom, that's good news on the revenue side. It's bad news on the expense side. So it's good news here that we're at 88.6% of our revenue flow, so we, we feel good about that. I want to bring up that property tax collections over last year at this time are up $675,000. Sales tax collections are down from last year $175,000, which gives us a net increase of right at a half million dollars. And what's really good about that is the fact that we budgeted about a million dollars of fund balance last year when we made our budget. So by having this additional revenue, this means we will not have to dip into our fund balance as far as we had anticipated. So that's really good news. You go to the expense page, the next one, and you can see, if you look at the 2008, 2009 year-to-date expenses, at, at the bottom of the column, there's $41,073. And if you look, move over to the third, the last column, 2009, 10-year-to-date, $41,001.7. As you can see, we are holding the budget line on the expenses. We're right where we were last year, just slightly better. Again, look at the last column on the right-hand side. Our expenditure rate is 79.6%. Last year at this time, we were 79.7, so we're doing really good. So far, we have, as you know, two more months to go in the calendar year, but we're feeling pretty good about this right now. One thing I wanted to point about the budget is the IDEA money, the title money, the ARAM money, and now the Race to the Top money, all comes to us after we spend our own money and request reimbursement, which puts us into a cash flow situation again. That's about $8 million that we've got to be aware of as we spend. So that's why I want to make sure we knew that the fund balance issue is a concern for the finance department to make sure that we have enough to carry us, and now they've added an extra little, little thing on top of that to worry about. But we, we feel pretty good about where we are right now. Do you want to have any questions?
Mr. Orne?
It appears to me that you all are doing a great job budgeting. I'd like to see those figures. And do you expect this trend to go through the end of the school year, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, we, we anticipate that the expenditure side will be running about the same. Typically, we have a little uptick at the very end because we might try to get some projects started, like, for example, on the expenditure of the last one regular capital outlay, half of the money in fund balance came from last year for Black Fox Roof, half of it came in this year. That's why that means over budget. But that's, that's how we do it. So that'll be a slight. Revenue side, we're seeing some good trends right now with the revenue in the city. We're not getting hit. I think it went, last month was the first time it's gone up in a while on the revenues received. So we're seeing some good trends, so the economy looks like it is coming back. Housing starts are still, just, just a little bit better, nothing, nothing to write home about. No pun intended there. But just up, just a touch. So yes, we, we think we're okay.
One other, one other question. Operation of plant, as far as expenditures are concerned? I see somebody's doing a good job on Operation of Plant. You saved somewhere in the neighborhood almost $294,000 over, from last year to this year. What is that, how does that happen?
Operation of Plant is utilities.
Right.
And we, as you know, put in place a year ago that contest, make people aware about our utility expenditures, and we have received the benefit of that, that people are watching. They're doing our utility expenses are way down. So in this, next year's budget, we were able to take those extra expenses out, and that's one way it helped us balance our, our operating budget for next year.
Yeah, that's, that's good. I like to see that.
Ms. Dunn.
What's the turnaround on reimbursement from the state?
After we spend the money and turn it in to them, we've, we've been filing quarterly with them on most things, but I think they have indicated that they'll move things faster if we need it. So basically, we're looking at three-month turnaround. The time we send it in, they, they pay fairly quickly.
Dr. Gilbert? Attendance report, Mr. Anderson.
Behind tab six is your attendance report. We are, we were just, we lost two students on, from last month, which is still good. We're still, we're still up 57 over our budgeted amount, so that, that helps on the revenue side. Our average pupil teacher ratio was 19.53 to 1 for the district, and our average total license in the schools is 13.43. We did pick up an additional five special ed students this month, and the majority of them came from, four of them came from the pre-K program. If they're in pre-K, that means the students will be with us. So our, our program is now up to 133, meaning special ed services. So our program is now up to a hundred and thirty-three, meaning special ed services that'll be required there. Our percentage of attendance, we were last month at this time ninety-six point eight, and we're at ninety-six point three for this current month, so we're doing, we're doing real well on that. And last month, we were, let's see, ninety-five point eight, so we're doing really good on the attendance. We haven't seen any hit on that at all.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Other business, Dr. Gilbert, out-of-county tuition.
Okay. If you remember, last month, you did move for tuition for out-of-county students to be raised and that it began, used the following for two years by increments of a thousand dollars to cap at four thousand. When you, when you made that motion and decided upon that, what we learned is that we already had some folks who had paid, and those others that were in the process of paying the out-of-county tuition. I would like for you to revisit that tonight, possibly postpone implementation of that increase until next year, since, again, we do have a situation where we had some people who had paid one amount, and then depending upon the date that they, that people paid, they were paying another. Also, I would like, so I would like for you to revisit that tonight, if you would, please.
Will it stop for discussion? Dr. Buttram?
Uh, Dr. Gilbert and Ms. Wade, when I got several emails and a couple of phone calls from parents who shared the very same thing with me, that they had actually paid their tuition according to their registration letter and followed that, and there was no disclaimer on that letter at all, which I would suggest we would put on that from now on, saying that the tuition is subject to change at any time during the school year for future use. But I would like to make a motion to amend my motion that, or change the motion that I made at the last meeting with this information, especially with the information that we have on the amount per pupil. I would like to move that we keep tuition nine hundred dollars for anyone who will enroll from out-of-county before July the first. After July the first, I suggest the tuition go to two thousand for the school year, for the following school year to two thousand five hundred, and for the third school year to three thousand two hundred and fifty as the cap. That would be eight dollars below what the amount per pupil is that we spend in the city. The increments would increase smaller now. It would give the parents, an opportunity to have already paid, and any other parent who would like to come on to Murfreesboro City from any outside county, they can come for nine hundred dollars this year if they register before June thirtieth, and then, of course, make it effective July first for anyone who would be entering after that point. But that would be my motion.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I hate to ask you this, but just in a real quick synopsis, what you're saying is postpone, I'm sorry, not postpone, but if a parent registered a child before July one?
Before a new fiscal year starts.
Okay. It's nine hundred dollars. If they register after July one, it will be the two thousand dollars that we voted on at the last meeting.
Right, but I, yes, and then I would say change that from, to move to two thousand five hundred, and then three thousand two hundred and fifty, the other two years where we thought it would move to three thousand and four thousand. This would stay in line with the percentage that we spend. But as far as the fiscal year, Mr. Campbell, I feel like those parents who had already been aware that they could bring their children here should get to come for nine hundred dollars next year. But now we're going to put it out there that our new fiscal budget starts July first, therefore, we should charge, continue, go ahead and charge the two thousand that we would hope that the others could have paid, but.
After July first.
Right, when our new budget starts.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Ms. Phillips and then Dr. Andrews.
I was just wondering if there would be any benefit to just doing it one year at a time, as opposed to setting it for the next three years. I'm not opposed to raising it. That's not it. I'm not opposed to raising it. I'm just wondering if there's a benefit to doing it just one year at a time, as opposed to three.
Dr. Andrews, then Ms. Duggan.
I know in some schools, some universities, what they do is, when you're admitted to the university, your tuition is frozen, and you have the same tuition every year. We're talking about some pretty big jumps. We have children that have been in the system for a while. You know, times are a bit tight. You got a couple of kids in school going up, you know, adding three or four thousand dollars, maybe more, to a family's budget is quite a bit. So I would, I would maybe see this as a better thing to do if we could have, say that when a child starts school here, that that's going to be their tuition throughout the time that they're here. It's a pretty big jump, so, and then they would know when they signed up what they're getting into. Sort of like the grandfather type thing.
Ms. Duggan?
I know that there are many districts that do not allow any students to come into their district if they're out-of-county. So this is, you know, of course, our option to allow out-of-county students if we desire to, and, you know, we are speaking about out-of-county, not county children. I think an advantage of having a three-year plan, if we do intend to increase it, would be that parents would know what to expect. If we go ahead and did that now, they would know what to expect in the years to come.
Mr. O'Neal?
Mr. Buttram, what did you, what did you say, starting July one, that fee would be? That it would jump from nine hundred to what, July one?
It would become two thousand, what we had voted on last time. We would go ahead and make it two thousand for anyone who registers from out-of-county after July first, but until then, of course, we would continue to enforce a nine hundred dollar tuition. And the three-year plan was, was a plan that we did, so it would not have to be done in one year, and that it would be easy on families to do this. And I can't imagine any state school, or I really have not heard of many colleges unless they would be, you know, very private, that would ever do, tell a student at the beginning of their freshman year, your tuition is this forever until you graduate, but to, I think that would be an accounting nightmare, one year to tell some students, this is what you're going to pay for your career, and then two years later, tell another group of students coming in, this is what you'll have to pay, and then we'll have to keep up with. I just, I think that's complicating matters too much. Again, we've had it at nine hundred dollars for fifteen years, and I think we've lost money over the years, so I'm sorry if we have to increase it for, there are going to be a few families affected, but I think we're trying to make the best adjustments possible to help us get to the point where we should have been ten years ago.
Ms. Duggan, then Mr. Campbell.
Do, when parents register their child, and have the intent to return for them if they're already in our district, do they pay at that point? Because I know some parents had already paid and some had not, so what has been the policy on when they actually pay?
We require not only the intent to return at the school level, but if they're from out-of-county, they have to come to the central office and pay upon registration there.
Okay.
We, they used to have a program where they would pay and pay in installments and things, but it got to be a chase, of tracking all of that and chasing. So the policy was changed back quite a few years ago that says they pay it all upfront when they register.
So is that in policy or is it administrative directive?
That's administratively, we did it.
Well, I think it's a good idea to give a three-year plan. I think that lets parents prepare, rather than coming and, I don't want us to get into a situation where we change it every year, you know, or have the option of changing. I think of, instead of three-year plan and go with it, then, I mean, that's, I think that's what we're looking at, is to eventually get to the point to where the parents are paying what, what is costing us locally to educate their child.
Ms. Phillips and then Mr. O'Neal.
I think we always have the opportunity to revisit this. Is that, is that true, Ms. Baker? I mean, the board at any kind of time can revisit this. Is that true, I mean, after, for the following year?
Yes, during budget, you can always revisit this issue.
Could you review for me what the original motion was that was passed? And because it's different from what, I understand that Dr. Buttram is changing his motion, but I would like to have.
It should be in the minutes. Hold on, here it is. We have, okay, Dr. At the prior meeting, Dr. Buttram moved that tuition for out-of-county students be raised to two thousand for next year, and that the tuition be increased for the following two years by increments of one thousand dollars to cap at four thousand. This is the amount spent on them by the city schools, and nine hundred is too low, and Mr. Campbell seconded the motion.
And now your final figure is what, Dr. Buttram?
Let me, oh, I was going to add, later in the discussion, Dr. Buttram agreed to amend his motion to add the fact that this would not apply to out-of-county students who are the custodial children of Murfreesboro City School employees, and Mr. Campbell agreed to second that amendment. So the final motion raised it to two thousand three and four, but did not apply to students who were the custodial children of Murfreesboro City School employees.
And your final figure.
And, Dr. Buttram, if you don't mind, what you're telling us?
The figures that I recommended tonight, actually from the sheet that was provided, given us our local funds, and I actually, in our last meeting, we calculated that around four thousand dollars is why I suggested four thousand, but even looking at this number, three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight, for us to go three years from now to three thousand two hundred and fifty, I hope we all realize that by that time, this number's probably going to be closer to four or five thousand, so there's still a deal here.
Okay. And then Mr. O'Neal, then Ms. Duggan.
As a follow-up, Mr. Anderson, thank you for providing this sheet. I under, this money that's coming in from the state, then is three thousand nine hundred, that follows the child, no matter what system he's being educated in, public work?
Correct, that's correct. The amount will change depending on what district they're in, but that follows the student.
Okay. So that's what, how much this child is bringing into the system, I see.
Well, that's how much the child is, it's costing to teach the child that we get from the state. They're not bringing in anything, everything.
Well, I guess it's depending on how you look at it, which the perspective.
Mr. O'Neal?
Well, in this sheet that staff provided, it's really helpful because it does show the local portion, the Rutherford County portion of the twenty-five hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and the city of Murfreesboro for six ninety-two, for a total of thirty-two fifty-eight, and I believe that's how, how Dr. Buttram got his final figure for the oh twelve, oh thirteen year, and I think that's appropriate. I think it's a matter of choice. I think parents that live out, outside the county have a choice to put, take their child to the school in their county that they are, or they're, they can take a child, bring their child to a city school and pay the appropriate tuition fee. So I think it's a fair and equitable issue because basically, that's what the city of Murfreesboro person is providing in their funding as well as the county. So I think it's a choice and it's an equity issue, and I totally support, I totally support the three-year program that Mr. Buttram's outlined.
Ms. Duggan?
I just had a question. Is there, are there any other thoughts or insights that we haven't thought of that the central office staff might have to share with us?
I would like clarification on particularly, in reference to the students who are custodial children. I'm warning not to go on assumptions, but I'm assuming full-time employees, and with that, so would this take effect, would this take effect immediately, or we stand at the nine hundred dollars for also those employees as they have been?
I believe that the, if this changes my last motion completely, then I need to add that I would like the staff, full-time as staff of Murfreesboro City School, to have the option to bring their child if they come from out-of-the-county.
At no cost or at the nine hundred dollars?
Yeah, no cost. No.
And I want to clarify, in the school admissions policy that we discussed earlier, I put in the sentence reflecting that point, that an out-of-county student residing with a parent or legal guardian who is a full-time employee of Murfreesboro City School system shall not be required to pay the out-of-county tuition. Is that correct?
Yes.
Dr. Andrews?
That was going to be my comment, so I don't think we need it in this motion.
All right. Do you have another question, ma'am?
Well, do, would the board think it would be appropriate to give any kind of discount to a part-time employee from out of the county? I could see that being reasonable, not this big a discount.
So any discussion board on the question Ms. Phillips has raised about the part-time employee?
Can we let that be a decision made on a case-by-case basis, because I can't imagine there being a lot of those that would come up.
That, that would be difficult, to make that decision on a case-by-case basis. I think it's much cleaner to set a clear-cut demarcation between a full-time employee and a part-time employee.
Well, then, I'm okay with including full and part-time staff members of Murfreesboro City Schools, because, I'm trying to think of all the part-time positions we have in the city, and I figure if a parent's going to drive here to work for Murfreesboro City part-time, that's without benefits or anything, and they do that to bring their child so that child can get an education here, then I applaud that parent's willingness to come in and work part-time and make less money, so that, maybe that should be a perk. So, yeah, I would be for part-time and full-time being added in.
Are there any other questions or comments? Dr. Andrews?
I think to make that change, we would have to go back to the first policy and address it there.
Yes, if y'all make that change in this vote, I will revise that policy to reflect the decision for second reading.
Should that be two separate votes, since there's a policy, and this is a vote about actual tuition? To me, it seems like we should make, those should be separated, because it'll be cleaner than if we go back and change the tuition amount, we don't have to go and change a policy.
Well, the policy, I had drafted that sentence based on the vote regarding tuition, and you've only passed it on first reading, so I can revise it to fit any new input from the board based on additional votes for second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Ms. Duggan?
In our special session last week, our work session, I had suggested that maybe we get input from our funding body, so I'd like to ask Mr. Washington if he would, to share any perspective that he has on this issue.
I think you're hitting in the correct, in the correct manner of how many what you did before. I do disagree with the part-time, though, right? But it's your call, it's your call. You don't have that many I'm going to deal with anyway, but it's less than twenty, so... So, well, and then, um...
Are there any other questions or comments before we take our vote?
Mr. Wilkerson, do you have any idea how many employees we're talking about here?
I, I don't have a, a real quick recollection of out-of-county employees. Uh, my guess would be very, very small number that would drive out-of-county.
Well, do we have any, how many out-of-county students do we have? We know that total, don't we?
I think, it was asked when a twenty, is that the?
Nineteen.
I believe the number that we got the other day was nineteen.
So of those nineteen, do you think there might be one or two that might be in a, a child of a part-time employee?
I would guess would be zero at this point. That, that's, that's a guessing, but I could certainly try to find out, yeah.
Ford, if you're ready, and there are no other comments or questions? Ms. Ridley, would you call the roll on this vote, please, ma'am?
Would you read the motion?
Yeah, just a second. There wasn't, are you going to accept his addition of the part-time employees to the motion?
My second, I will accept.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dr. Buttram moved to keep tuition at nine hundred dollars for anyone who will enroll from out-of-county before July first. After July first, tuition will go to two thousand dollars. The following school year, tuition would increase to twenty-five hundred. The following year to three, two, three thousand two hundred and fifty, and no charge to custodial children of full-time and part-time employees.
Of Murfreesboro City?
Of Murfreesboro City.
Thank you, Mrs. Ridley. If you will call the roll for the board?
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Neer?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
If she can.
Thank you. I had the roll call for Mr. Neer would get his first.
Ms. Duggan?
I have a question of Mrs. Baker concerning Robert's rules of order. Would it be appropriate, or as a clarification, can the dates be added to that as far as, instead of just saying next year and the following year, without having to vote on it again?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I would like that to be done, just for clarification purposes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Dr. Gilbert, do you have anything else that you would like to say at this time? It's always just a pleasure to work with you. Thank you, ma'am. Board, is there anything else? Hearing none, we are adjourned.